Select Board meeting to order. We'll begin with the process of reorganizing the select board now that there's been an election, even though the people who were up for election got easily reelected in. And congratulations to Selectman Mills and Hooker on their reelection yesterday. This will give everybody a chance to vote for their leadership positions of Chair and Vice Chair. So we'll begin with the position of Select Board Chair. Are there any nominations for this position?
I nominate Alicia Malley.
Is there another vote?
Fred, you want to move together?
I'm second.
Okay, seconds. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask all those in favor of electing Alicia Malley as Chair, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That's unanimous, four to nothing. Congratulations, Alicia Malley.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Now, as to the Board's Vice Chair, we'd be happy to take nominations. Are there any nominations for the position of Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Dave Mills.
I'll second.
Is there any other nomination that anyone would like to make for Vice Chair? Hearing none, I'll ask that all those in favor of electing Dave Mills as Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations to the Chair and Vice Chair, Alicia and Dave. The meeting is yours.
Great, thank you. Alright, so any need for executive?
Not for me, Madam Chair.
Anyone else have anything? Oh, it's the first time in a while, huh? Any need to amend the agenda? Guess we did have a couple add-ons.
One, I have an authorization that needs to go to the folks at the village farm authorizing the town manager to assist them with the application process essentially. And there's also a certificate of highway mileage that the state would like towns to fill out, even though there's been no changes since this year.
Okay, great.
So move, we adopt the agenda as amended?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so appointment of recording clerk Linda Drummond.
We're going to appoint one of the government recording clerk?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointment of official newspaper, the reporter.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the select board meeting schedule.
They can mostly group it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Man Joe, you're gonna say something, come on!
Sounds good to me.
Alright, we've got a lot more of that to go.
Yeah.
In the past, we've adopted these listings.
Oh, en masse?
En masse.
That'd be great.
Feel free to do that if you'd like.
Yeah.
We point all those that are listed here on the sheet.
Alright, I'll second that.
And most of those are, of course, are reorganization terms.
Okay, one question, do we need another fence viewer?
We do.
It's been open for a long time, and well, no, but I didn't know Jack if...
Oh, is he interested?
Probably ought to find somebody, because Jack may not be able to...
Let's...
He's not...
Jack Fox.
Frank Bovey was the third one, and it's been a good while, and he's been gone.
Yeah.
I don't know, apparently not too many people are eager to get into that.
The good news is we've had much use of them, but when we...
Yes.
It's good to have them.
Well, I think that's just a regulation, isn't it?
I can solicit some interest in the newsletter, et cetera, for more people. But we can certainly work with those two for now, and we can always replace Jack Fox if we find enough candidates.
Well, I mean, I guess for what little work it is, I'd be willing to, if that's allowed.
Oh, I think so.
I don't see...
I don't think there's any prohibition on it.
So just write to him on the vacancy? Or take out the...
Part of my motion that we appoint Dave Mills as the fence viewer.
Fantastic. I will let you know if there's any prohibition on a select one, but...
I don't think it should be.
Oh, then I guess the other one, I wouldn't mind being the alternate for the Rutland Transportation, because we need someone there as well.
Fantastic.
Make that part of my motion.
Still less onerous than to do these one by one.
I'll let you know when those meetings come up, because I'd be happy to even go with you one night to get you introduced to everybody.
Alright, I know, I went, well, I think we all, weren't we all invited to the...
Report.
Yes, that's true.
So, it's the one and only time I was at one of those meetings, but yeah.
That's great.
John, they used to have a position of surveyor wooden timber.
That's right.
Is that still in there?
No.
That disappeared.
And there also used to be a wearer of coal.
Really?
Was that right?
Any number of outdated offices like Grand Juror recently was banned.
Yeah, so they've eliminated some of them.
They have, they have.
Probably just as well.
Yep. Alright, so subject to those two changes, you can feel free to...
Just need to slap it on the motion.
Second. Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, look at that, first page done. Okay, um, any changes or corrections to select board minutes of February 17th? I didn't see.
There's also liquor board minutes.
Alright. You have all this stuff, so I didn't... No, it makes more sense, we talked about that, one of their most recent meetings, it kind of makes more sense to have it start over at you anyway. I should just make sure I look at it, though, you know, when I come in.
And it'll always be here, and maybe do that when you come in, maybe.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good, yeah.
Sign in two places, Joe.
Oh, John, he keeps not feeling good, or...
No. He's getting better, but he just wasn't quite up for his height.
I see Jack Fox out around the barnyard there, but I don't... I think it's kind of been a little harder on him than he thought.
No, he's no spring chicken.
He had open-heart surgery.
Yeah.
Any questions on the orders?
Is either Depot Hill there, Casella, that's 17,000?
170,000.
170,000, that must be on a salt shed.
That's actually on the Depot Hill sewer.
On that, probably, I know it was one or the other, right?
That's right.
Yeah, I kind of figured that. On these other, are we talking about these orders here as well?
Yes, if you have any questions on those.
Almost down at the bottom there is, oh, 4,396, I don't, it's A N N N, I'm not sure just what that all amounts to.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure, Joe, but I do know that the listers have approved it. It's an annual payment to help them monitor the grand list, so I imagine it's some kind of a computer software package and/or mapping. I just don't know which of the...
Vision's awful, right? That they use for doing it?
That's right.
It says vision.
Yes.
So I assumed that's what it was.
I just didn't recognize it as something I know about, that's why I asked.
I know.
Yeah.
You're right.
And I see the police have got another $516 for ammo. Must be they're doing a lot of area practicing.
I think that was part of the order that just came in late.
Yeah.
I had a couple boxes for the police department on that about 10 days ago. But I did see in the, in the records that there was that reimbursement from the officers for their individual purchases.
You add this to the last one, and it makes quite a bit of money.
It was up to 8,000 or 9,000.
The one that's underlined is what they put back in, so.
They put that back.
Back in.
Oh, that's good, I mean, I...
Yeah, so that, it makes it a lot smaller.
Okay.
Any other questions on orders? I'll circulate them in a batch, including payroll. Alicia, I imagine you'll want to get to Mr. Norris.
Yeah, that was planning on it.
I'll split these up, it's gonna be easier, I guess. I'll unchuck them.
Where are you getting them, Dave? Well, I'm fronting them as fast as I can.
At least they don't have to go back and forth. All going in one direction. Good thing. Yeah, it makes it a little less confusing.
Maybe the end, I'm not sure. Oh, listen, today's Herald, there was a lot of towns there, election result, but Pittsford wasn't in there.
I know, we talked about that earlier.
Helen explained to me that Liz sent it to somebody at the Herald, but missed the name in the email. Didn't get there in time for that.
And there may be other towns that are missing too, I mean.
Yeah. Alright, Town Managers' Report.
Yes. The contractors subcontractor on the salt shed project has now erected all of the roof structure. They had a bit of a delay in parts. The fabric cover has been about 2/3 installed, and that will be hopefully finished as soon as they have a good day with no wind. Could be as early as tomorrow, I imagine. As to the Depot Hill pump station project, Casella has completed work on the replacement of the two Depot Hill pump stations. All that will remain is some cleanup seed replacing in better weather days. As I mentioned, the Middlebury Fence Company has put the new fence up at the rec, and we have a few punch list items, and they're expected to be back to straighten out the first two fences, which are not absolutely straight, and also to put a couple caps on posts that were missing, as well as some restoration of the site. I did attend by Zoom that public hearing in Chittenden on February 22nd to confirm that, yes, in fact, all they were talking about is some minor adjustments to the location of Bisbee and Lead Mine Roads up there. No impact at all on the West Creek, on the West Road extension, excuse me, which is the access road we've always used to get up to our water sources on Mountain Quackett. So, no, nothing to worry about, at least for now, in town of Chittenden. Stephanie Burke of the Regional Planning Commission has forwarded the current and final draft of the local hazard mitigation plan to the state, and I'll let you know when we have word from them as to how it was received. Highway Foreman reports that he's been told by Kenworth to expect that the new cab and chassis will be ready for transfer over to Viking City, and that was to be sometime... I tried to get an update from Chad this morning, said he'd call into Kenworth, but again, that was the last report. And if so, we can get the body to Viking City. Work on it sometime in March, as soon as they get it. Either they have a slot on March 8, or, or the three weeks later, and it'll depend on when we can get it to them. There's apparently, you know, a substantial period of time to install the body thereafter. We learned, some of us during, and some of us just after our budget information hearing, that a broken tree limb damaged our pickup police cruiser, both its cab, roof, and windshield during that windstorm on Monday night. Thankfully, nobody was seriously hurt, although Officer Guette says he had his bell rung. Shaken up. The cruiser has been hauled up for repairs at Middlebury Dodge, and the Brandon Police Department has been good enough to offer us a loaner for the several weeks it might take to get those repairs done. The Regional Planning Commission, which is our consultant for the sidewalk scoping study, has generated a good request for proposals and seeking a consultant that'll handle the project. And the, the project will soon go out to request proposals, and then the committee that we've set up, consisting of myself, Alicia, Highway Foreman, and then the Regional Planning Commission Representative Devon and his assistant Eric Hall, will be interviewing candidates, and then we'll report back to the full board with a recommendation about that. Omia's legal counsel has provided a purchase and sale agreement for us to look over regarding the town's desire to purchase a small parcel of Omia land on West Creek Road near the intersection with the Kendall Hill Road. And that's all about the town's longstanding desire to relocate our Florence Fire Substation. I will ask Attorney Cuffer to look it over. It looks for like a fairly straightforward document, and we can discuss his input and the document itself at the next meeting on March 17th, if that's agreeable. Depot Hill covered bridge repairs. The Highway Foreman will attend the next select board meeting to discuss options for the deck repair work to be done. He's done some research about other covered bridges and other ones in town and others from out of town as to how best to tackle that project with runners. Obviously, there'll be a needed detour, so we won't want that project to conflict with the next project I'm going to mention, which is the Kendall Hill Road Deck Repairs. Daniel's Construction, I've been in touch with them, they plan to perform their deck repairs on the Kendall Hill Bridge in either two to four weeks, depending on how extensive the damage is, in the May and June timeframe. So, that's it for me.
Any questions for John? And I just noticed it's not on the agenda, but this is usually where we do select board member
Oh, right.
marks. Anyone have anything? Okay, any public comment? Butcher, only public.
I'm just an interested observer, I noted that you're going to sign off on a lot of the required standards and network to, so you could get higher grant percentages. So I was kind of interested in watching that tonight, thank you.
Alright, so skip old business, we can go to remarks from Deer Lane Solar Project Developer Mike Norris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's all yours.
Oh, thank you.
They have, they have your submission in their packets.
Okay, good, thank you. So, in your packets, you'll see a site plan that I've been working with a carpenter in Costa on, or a net metered solar array down on Deer Lane, folks know as the old P&amp;T, Paranovich, Paranova tractor shop. This is actually an amendment to, or in addition to a smaller project that we did last year. It was under 15 KW or effectively 60 panels. And we got that online before the end of last year, and it's their desire, and we're permitting it for them. I'm A&amp;M LLC, which is Amanda and Mike, the Mike part, and Amanda Moore is my wife. So what we're presenting to the board is the addition of another 35 KW. So if you look on your site plan, you'll see that secondary represents the existing tables as well, and the other four and a half tables, the channels that represent the new addition, totally of 50 KW AC panels, 50 KW DC, which can provide enough power to, you know, annual power for their needs. Last week, I presented this to the planning commission. It's been about four years since I've been in front of you. As in 2016, permitted and installed with your support, 500 KW array that's on Mark Webber's land, of Windsor Lane. So, we'd be, yeah, I love a letter of support from you folks, or at the very least, a lack of an objection. But being a runner, I like to put it out in front of everybody and work with everybody that I can formally and inform it.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
In terms of how much larger the project will get as a result of this additional work?
Yeah.
You've got 50 panels now, how many more do you have in mind?
So it's going to be, there'll be a total of two of them now, 60 panels. So, that's 15, so there's going to be about 120 panels, if you will.
So you're almost doubling the size, or more than doubling?
More, more than doubling the size, yeah. So it'd be 120, oh, and let me just finish my math if I could, but 120, it'd be 30. So it'd be more than doubling it, approximately 180, no more than 180 panels, so.
New panels or total?
The total would be 180.
Got it.
Existing is 60.
So there's 60 existing now in the, in the two arrays?
Yeah.
Okay.
And one, two tables, and when I say tables, it's, being a new science, so to speak, a panel is two and a half feet wide by four and a half feet high.
Right.
A table is those stanchions of panels, if you will.
Right.
Where you'll have four, four I-beams pounded into the ground. So those are generally referred to as tables. And then the arrays are sort of the whole project, if you will.
Right.
So, right now, if you drive by there, there's two, two tables.
Which are a total of 60 panels.
Yep, 60 panels.
And you're adding one, two, three, looks like four and a half more tables.
That's correct, yeah.
But, so they aren't going to be quite as, because if you guessed, so 30, so that's, okay, so that's 120, 150 you're adding.
Yeah.
Okay, so, alright, so, okay, yeah.
And one of them's smaller, by the way.
Right, it looks like about a half, half to 2/3, yeah.
So, and then, and most of it's just going to be in front of the other one, with about 30 feet in between.
Okay, yeah.
These are set back as far as, you know, far from the road as we can reasonably do and have it still be productive. And it's set at equal distance, you know, spacing as far as we can away from any other joint property or building. So we have some very healthy setbacks.
I was going to say, how do you, how would you describe the visual impact of what you've got now versus what you have in mind?
Well, very little, just because right now, there's two panels, and if you were approaching at normal speeds on Route 3, you'd have to look over very quickly if you're coming from, from the west. If you're coming from the east, you'd have to even look more quickly in order to see it, because the only thing you're going to see, if you're perpendicular to it, is the cross-section of the panels themselves, which is not a lot to see, especially with the backdrop of fairly industrial buildings. Coming from the west, heading east, there's two very robust hardwood trees that are right along the driveway, the TNT tractor on Deer Lane, that are going to obstruct the view of those panels, and those are the shiny sides of the panels. So reasonably, the only way you're going to see them is, what does my wife like to say? It'd be hard to see them at the speed of a galloping horse, so.
They go a little faster on Route 3, yeah.
Yeah, well, but we lowered the speed.
Yeah, just cut the speed limit down there.
I've got to admit, I mean, I knew there were solar panels there.
Yeah.
And until I looked at this, I always thought they were out behind the building.
Yeah.
I, again, your focus is what's ahead of you, you don't really, and if you look over there, you see that salt shed thing they've got, that, that sticks out the most.
Yeah.
I've never seen these solar panels.
I know.
For about, you know, four, five months, four months.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, so, and then the addition to them is going to be right in front of it.
Right.
So, you know, just south of it. So, again, from the road, in that clear, you know, the clearing right around the Deer Lane there, the giant one, and that's where it opens up, and you're able to see it on the road, you're basically going to see the cross-section of it.
Right.
And from the west side, you're going to see trees first. If you're coming east to west, you're going to see the backside of it, but there's a, there's a split rail fence, you know, on the, on the east side of that. That's the neighbor.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Could some sort of a shrub be put on the ends to obstruct even seeing it that way?
Well, you know, we talked about that, but that's not going to, it's not going to obstruct anything, because it's only going to be the cross-section.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And then the only way, the only way we can do any screening at all that would be effective would be to have it right next to the road, and then that doesn't work, because you get salt. You just get salt from Route 3, you kill anything.
Hmm.
So, yeah, so, I mean, it, you know, just speaking freely, it's an industrial building. You're looking at steel and brick.
Oh, yeah.
And this is more steel and aluminum. There's, as far as preserving the, the feel of the scenery, it's, it's, there's a salt, there's a salt building there that's mafia blocks, it's stacked up 14 feet. It's not, it's not that pretty.
No.
No, and that, and that is what catches your eye, is that building.
I don't, it's sort of like putting lipstick on a pig there. I don't, I don't, if I, if I plant something so close that I'm screening the whole area, the salt's just going to wipe those trees out to get close enough. If I plant a hedge on the east side of the solar array, when the sun comes up in the morning, it's just going to cast a shadow all along those arrays. So, I don't, I don't know if you remember, but I, we did the 500 up in Windsor Lane. I went to every, every possible person that would see that array, and we planted trees for them. That was in the backdrop of nature, and we wanted them to see trees instead of solar arrays if they wanted to, and some did. I don't, I don't have anything to screen here.
What did the planning commission say when you made your presentation? Did they have any suggestions, or?
They did not, they...
Did they express support for it?
Yep, they wrote a letter of support. Yeah.
The thought comes to my mind, is, is that the greatest location for them? Because in the morning, the hill to the east side of Route 3 there blocks the sun, you don't, you don't get much sun, you know, and Proctor's pretty narrow right, valley there, you got the hill on the west, your, your sun... Proctor's pretty narrow right valley there, you got the hill on the west, your, your sunlight hours of the day in Proctor are not like they are here in Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
And I have no objection to it, I'm up on the hill up above it, but it's out of my sight. And, and I don't we're, we're putting some on our sawmill roof, on the roof.
Yeah, I heard about that.
But you're, you're not gonna get the sunlight on them as many hours a day that location as you would some other locations.
Yeah, no, it's true. And that's why
You must know what you're doing or you wouldn't be building them there.
I understand in the, in the winter, when the sun doesn't come up very high, not that much production in it. And that's, that's the other reason why we we started and tried to get them as far as far north as possible. Get them away from that ridge. You know? No, plus there's two, two really big hardwood trees right there along the driveway. But that done a lot of these, and that really only affects it in winter for the most part. And not a lot of production in the winter anyway.
Was there any objection from the, any of the adjoining landlords?
No, there was, there was no objection.
I don't have any objection.
No.
It doesn't bother me, I mean.
We're using an existing power pole. We're not putting any, anything new in, we're not putting any more mines.
Is there some reason you didn't do this before when you did the original project?
Well, that's a very good question. You know, it came to me in, you know, right at the end of, end of October, early November. And so what we, we'd like to do, we'd like to do this fifty KW plant, and I said, well, I, I can do that for you, but the whole permitting process, because the one most of the motivation for businesses to put solar on is oftentimes tax credits. So you have a good year, you wanna get the system on that year in order to get the tax credits to use against that tax liability. So they wanted to get fifty KW on it, so look, it, it takes longer to permit a fifty KW, I can do a fifteen KW by right. And then we can go back and amend it later next year, so that's what I'm doing. So that's that's why.
I guess when you do a motion, you'll wanna consider whether you want to simply not object or whether you wanna authorize a letter to be written.
Right, what is everyone thinking?
Well, yeah, I mean, the planning commission already already wrote a letter.
Okay.
Signed it.
I mean, there's already panels there, I mean, it's sad, so I guess I would say, I would make the motion that we write a letter of support for this project.
Yeah.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Fantastic.
Coming in.
We're gonna keep Mike here because we talked about the idea of a second alternate on the planning commission.
Oh, right, yep, okay.
He has written a letter expressing his interest. Would you like to expand on that a little bit or?
Uh, yeah, I'd love to, I I came from the town of Moncton and father who's longtime select board member and and, you know, has done a lot of land development up there. I've worked with him quite a bit in Moncton and have some investment properties still up there. And I came to, came to Pittsburgh ten years ago and my wife and I have lived here and interestingly enough, one of the first people I met outside of my immediate circle was Mark Winslow. And he was one of the first people to tell me that Pittsburgh's a great town. And I've come to really believe that and and commiserating with Mark and recently became acquainted with Kevin Blow. They were telling me about, you know, the history of, of Pittsburgh and, you know, in terms of its stance on development and politics and all, all these things and 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 I, I felt like if I could be a part of the planning commission, that I would. You know, because I've come to, you know, this place is home, I'm very many generations in Addison County, but this place is home for me now. There's no doubt about that, I think I'll spend the rest of my days here if I can help it. And I like to contribute to the town any way I can. I am a solar developer currently. You know, previous to that, you know, worked on, you know, through solar development, I worked on a lot of two forty eight projects. I worked on a couple of act two fifty projects. You know, in Addison County. And my father was act two fifty review board member, appointed by Jim Douglas. Prior to that, I, I worked in insurance and also worked at a power corporation up G seats and properties. Done quite a few subdivisions. So I think, you know, if I can add a helping hand, I will. So just looking at the key leaves, the planning commission seems like a good place to start and if I could sit in and you know, I don't need to vote, but if I could sit in and pay attention and get involved with this great town, I, I would like the opportunity to do that.
That's great.
We don't ever turn away good health.
No.
We never turn away good health.
No. Project like this, does it have a time, is there a projected life to something like this or is it hopefully till the end of time?
Yeah, well, it's, you know, the CPG that you get from the state is, there's no time, that's until perpetuity. And allows you to interconnect and sell the power back to the, to GMP. The panels themselves, they have the the industry standard is that they're warranted to produce eighty percent of the nameplate power in twenty five years. So since, you know, X amount of sun on them, they'll produce four hundred watts. Twenty, let's just say it's four hundred watts, twenty, twenty five years later, same amount of sun, four hundred times point eight, you know, so but that warranty has to be honored whether it's here or Nevada. And what causes panels to break down? You know, that degradation going from a hundred to eighty. That happens in extreme heat. So up here, like up here in Vermont, I know some fellows that have, you know, ten, twelve acre solar sites. And they track this stuff. And they don't see any degradation. They're not seeing where each year the output's less and less. So, you know, I've seen commercial appraisers appraisings on a thirty five year lifetime for the same panels. And with the panels, once you plug those in and they run and they're on, unless you hit them with a tractor tire. No, I'm serious, you hit them with a tractor tire, they'll break.
Yeah.
But, you know, you can throw a pretty good snowball at them and you won't break, they're, they're tough. But they're tempered glass is what they are. So they, you plug that panel in and it works, that thing will probably work forever, it's completely encapsulated, it's enclosed. It's the inverters. What you're gonna have on the side of your building? Those are the things to watch out for. Those are finicky. They're really the heart and the brain of the whole thing, is those inverters. Now those things, they they will typically you know, you always wanna buy the longest warranty you can for the inverter. You always wanna do it. Because you probably need it. Anywhere from three years in to twelve years in, those things will probably fail and need to get replaced. But, you know, for five or six hundred bucks, you can get a twenty year warranty on them. Where if the thing, you know, goes south on you, you can make a phone call and just get another one in the mail. So people focus on the panels, because that's what they see. But it's really those inverters, those little boxes on the side of the building. Those are the things you gotta watch out for. Those are, that's what's gonna break down and needs a resetting, you know, you look up for no reason. You won't be producing any power. When you go over and the inverter's got a red light flashing, you turn it off, turn it back on, it's good to go. So but a very long lifetime. And at any point in time, say thirty five years later, you could pull those panels off, put some new panels on and keep going.
Bear it over.
Not bad, you know, the value of those projects are under permits. To have the ability to interconnect to the grid. You know, it's that map over there and you look at a GMP map, there's a lot of substations downstream. Well, you say, well, hey, I want solar. And you say, you put in your permit and GMP's gonna say, no, you can't do it. We have too much solar on that substation downstream. We can't let you put solar there. So a lot of people say, well, I wanna do solar, but I'm gonna wait. Well, maybe if they wait, they can still pump solar up, but on some circuits, on GMP circuits, if they wait, they're gonna go ahead and try to do it and it's already locked up, saturated, so.
Sounds like farmers, I guess, hard to find a market for milk today, isn't it? Nobody wants it, no.
It's all changing.
Hard to believe.
I can touch base with you after tonight about getting you a letter, maybe you have a form that you'd like us to use or we can write it from scratch.
Sure, well, I, I mean, honestly,
Maybe I'll look at what the planning commission
Planning commission, they already, they already wrote one and signed it. Maybe you just wanna add a signature to it.
Yeah.
Or a signature box, select board and another signature, then it will be you know, then it'll be a group letter of support.
Sure, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, sounds good, well.
So going back to what we were talking about, do we need a motion?
Yes, to, to appoint him.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Norris as an alternate to the planning commission.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How's your dad doing, by the way? I haven't seen him for a while.
What's that?
I said, how's your dad doing? I haven't seen him for quite a while.
Oh, yeah, well, knowing him the way you do, you know, he's
Still building houses, is he?
House building anonymous is where he needs to go. He's seventy six.
Oh, my God, wow, he wouldn't know it.
Yeah. You go for the last last fifteen years, this'll be the last one, this'll be the last house.
He's been retired the last ten that I know of.
Yeah. Retirement to him is more than forty hours a week. Well, anyway, I'll keep you.
Thank you.
Don't worry, it's a aye.
Oh, we'll do, thank you.
All right, consider approving the seasonal posting of town highways.
Yes, seasonal is the operative word, every year as we look toward mud season, we have a motion before the, or a resolution before the board to allow for the posting of the listed roads and they're listed here in your packet. Highway number and the common names.
Mostly
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, here is the resolution.
I expect probably Chad will be just like Sean would work with the guys.
Absolutely, whenever there's
cold weather.
A situation where they have a good cold stretch, they're happy to make exceptions.
Been pretty reasonable in the past.
Don't get hot doing it if they haven't told you you can.
Tell you what, the roads are breaking up a lot this year, I had to run to Benson today and I was like, holy crap.
I know this, boy, a crap ceiling, we're gonna have to watch that this summer too.
Well, by the way, I also wanna have a conversation with Chad about our parking lot up front. There's some pretty deep cracks. And that's a thirty five year old parking lot presumably, because the whole building is, it may be time to pull that
It's been, that's been done once. Yeah. But it's been done, yeah.
It's definitely showing its
Show its age.
Got tall sand out here too, you'd think it would be here here.
Chairman, there are three related things next on your agenda.
Yep.
Which we can probably deal with all at once if you'd like.
Yeah, sure. All right, so we have adopt V-Trans highway and bridge standards, sign certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory, and sound town, sign town highway annual financial management plan.
These are forms required by V-Trans as support for town eligibility for the maximum payout of grants. Structures grants, highway grants, they wanna see that you're following the program. You're trying to keep the water off the roads by using best management practices, roadside ditching, et cetera. And that you've accepted the state's proposed road and bridge standards. And if you're agreeable to signing off like we've done every year in the past, I can circulate all three of those documents around for signature.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
I'll make a motion and we approve them all.
Joe, you need to speak.
I know it.
Second. Well, if you all right, I'll second it, Joe's not gonna.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here you go, guys.
It becomes the Hooker and Mills show here.
Well, is the state gonna have somebody coming around checking up on towns, how they're doing, probably?
They, they do, actually, whenever we have these grants, they come out and visit the site.
Right.
And they make sure that you update your inventory, that we've replaced this culvert.
Right.
We've done this ditch. Yep, they do keep track of it. A lot of data points are following. It's the carrot and the stick, Butch, as you know. And mostly it's, it's the carrots of the grant money.
Exactly.
The grant money, and it, it meets ten percent more for the town. Yeah, so it's, you know, if it helps the roads, it makes sense.
Same, yeah.
Ten percent's a lot of money.
It is in some cases.
Yes, it is.
Butch needs to mute himself again.
Sounds like a squirrel eating nuts.
I'm, I'm trying to make sure I said the right number when I talk to you, so I, I'm sorry.
Tom, I didn't catch it, you get them wrong, though? No, they'll send them back.
Yeah, yeah. You didn't sign the disapproved line like we did before.
Oh, boy.
I don't think there is a disapproved line in this.
No, I didn't see one. That was what, liquor license or whatever?
There isn't a lot of space on those.
No, no.
How are you doing tonight, Kelly?
She awake?
She's nodding.
Probably got a nasty email or something.
You should.
I probably should.
You should.
Oh, well.
All right, review results of town meeting.
Yeah, just a brief recap, all town budgets passed by a roughly three to two margin. I'd like to thank everybody who helped develop the budgets and worked to educate voters and who took part in our informational hearing. And I'd like to, of course, congratulate again Selectman Mills and Hooker for their reelection comfortably. And so that's also to be congratulated. And the school budget, I should point out, also passed by a vote of about twelve hundred fifty to about nine hundred and fifty, give or take.
What were the numbers again?
I don't have the exact number.
Oh, that's right.
Twelve fifty to about nine fifty, something like that.
John, you might say it's pretty near business as usual, and even though the meeting is all messed up.
I know.
Yes, that's right. You know, it's, it's always curious to see how many no votes you'll get in a secret ballot. So, you know, maybe that's a message either that people will probably oppose any budget as long as they can do it privately. Or maybe there's something about Pittsburgh's budgets that they found upsetting, but level funding was pretty vanilla. Not too much to object to, I don't think, I haven't heard any complaints.
No. All right, appointments to fill elected offices left, oh, I think it's office, singular, left unfilled by election.
Actually, there is none under that category, this next category under appointment of, for boards and commissions um, would include, um, oh, you know, yeah, but we have the town rep to the library board. And so because there was no candidate, there were only write-ins, but dominating the field, Madam Chair, was Elizabeth Suya. Um, and she has expressed a willingness to serve.
I would make a motion to appoint her to that position.
I second that. All in favor say aye.
For like a candy or a chocolate bar. Come on. That's right.
Gosh.
Aye.
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 Sweeten. Congrats, Liz.
Complaints over lack of graft. I'd like to see that headline.
Grateful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. Um, okay. So Certificate of Highway Mileage.
Uh, yes, I have that, Madam Chair. That's also something that the town typically provides, even though we're telling the state that there has been no change in the amount of road miles, because we haven't built any new roads. If you're agreeable, we can have everybody sign that.
Yeah.
There we go.
Then the Pitts, Pittsburgh Village Farm. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something? No, I thought you were, I thought you were starting to say something.
No.
Okay. Um, Pittsburgh Village Farm Grant Application Authorization.
Yes, um, the folks at the village farm remind me that, uh, while they appreciate our, uh, our, the boards, uh, offer to be supportive of their grant application, they do have a form that the state requires, um, showing the legislative body has authorized the town manager to participate in that.
Oh, okay.
Process. So that's agreeable. That can be signed as well. I should say, Madam Chair, um, even though we've already approved the appointment of Betsy Morgan in that long list of candidates, there is a separate form that regional ambulance would like to-
Yes, yeah.
Circulate that around. Thank you.
Just realized our next meeting's on St. Patty's Day.
Oh, boy.
That means John's bringing in cabbage and corned beef for everybody, right?
Green beer.
There you go. That's okay too. Okay. All right.
Be a fun meeting.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, cause there won't be any dinner down at the church. So it's like, huh?
It's a bummer. Two years in a row.
They're gonna have any fairs this year. It's pretty early to talk about it.
Well, well, they gotta start planning. I mean, within the next month or so.
We've penciled in Pittsburgh Day for September fourth. We'll see how that goes.
No, fingers crossed.
What was it? I saw there was something the other day I'd seen was canceled for the year already.
Remember what in New York that's gonna go, but that's still, I saw that one.
Of course, if we just relocated to Texas, everything-
We do whatever we want. Yeah. Well, it's not all bad either. At least it'd be warm.
All right. I guess so. Last thing is to jump back to old business and consider adoption of amendment of town's burning ordinance.
Yeah, at the very end of tonight's packet is just a quick and easy, um, amendment which has been read, clarifying the periods during which the board will be authorized to allow a burning in the village. And those periods are from February first to seventh, February, uh, May first through tenth, and October tenth through twentieth. That's, uh, in keeping with Brad Heath's suggestion. And, um, if and when that's approved tonight, then that triggers the town's burden to publish notice that we've adopted this amendment and gives the voters a couple of months within which they can petition if they don't like it.
Right. Make motion when you approve it.
All second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Yep.
Twelve fifty-two to nine sixty was the school vote.
Oh, thank you.
Three hundred votes. It was Benson, Benson that turned down their anybody, or not this year, but historically they had all, used to have, I don't know, them over there.
All right. Guess that's it. I mean, a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah. May I clarify some information that I may have misspoken on before you adjourn?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I was talking to, uh, Tom yesterday and we were talking about the leveling that was going to happen on segment two, three, and four that I spoke to at town meeting.
Yep.
Uh, and I may have spoken to the wrong fiscal year. I may have spoken to fiscal year, uh, twenty-three, uh, in my report, uh, at the town meeting. And I did miss, misspeak at the Tom yesterday. It is actually, it is actually budgeted and probably, and will happen in FY twenty-two. So FY twenty-two starts one July, so of the year, so. No, I think that's what you said, Butch.
No.
Yeah, that, well, I, I might've been confused when I was talking with Tom yesterday.
Never. Cause I said, hey, come on. That's the whole year.
Yeah, I know. I know. You, so something was happening in twenty-two. Yeah, and I think this was it, Dave, but I, I just wanted to clarify. Well, I assumed it was happening this summer, so anyway.
So it's like the habit currently is this summer.
It goes out, hopefully it will.
Yeah.
July.
Yeah.
All righty then.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, reiterate my motion to adjourn.
Every say aye.
Aye.
There, Butch.
Thank you.